This conference will now be recorded.
Now, we're just waiting to resume a quorum and then we'll get started.
Katie's walking in.
We're just lacking the mayor.
So we have the deputy mayor.
Yes, it's all good.
It is, that's exactly, I'm just like, you know, Miss America, first runner up.
What am I gonna get you, man?
Sash, if you cannot perform the duties.
Okay. All right, shall we start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start, Anita, if you would please read the public hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Placid will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 4:45 PM, in person and by go-to meeting for considering the adoption of the 2023-24 village budgets. Dial-in information will be provided on the Lake Placid Village website and Facebook page. A complete copy of the tentative budgets may be found on the Village Village website at or you may obtain a copy of the Village Clerk's office, 2693 Main Street, Suite 204, Lake Placid, New York, 12946. All interested people are invited to participate in the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard. Sign Anita and explain, Village Clerk.
Thank you, Anita. Lauren or Laura, do you have any public comments you'd like to make?
I, this is Laura, I do not.
Thank you.
Just a few statements about the budget since we're here. The final time strike has not been determined, the one that is in your packet is based on last year's assessment values. I was in contact with the county this morning and this afternoon. They did not receive the change in assessments until almost noon, well, it was just after noon today and there were 400 changes in assessments and they are training new persons, so I may have them tomorrow, I may have them at the end of the week, it depends on how long it takes them to keep them in. There is some use of fund balance, the fund balance is less than the prior years' use of fund balance, and he did say within the 2% tax cap, it was put in the, in an article that it came out to 2.4%. If you look, I had no paperwork with me when I gave the interview, so it is within the 2% tax cap, but there is a .04% that is allotted to all towns and villages and it is the tax base growth factor. So that's why when you calculate it, it calculates out to 2.4%.
So they said there's 400 grievances?
Yes, between the town and the village, but they get them from the town in Elba, so they have to go through and put in all the modifications.
So at 18%, and we only went up to, we're at, we'll just say 14, you know, even if it's anything like.
Right, I pulled the.
So we're still 14 under.
Right, I pulled the ones from last, or that they had put on there prior to grievances, and it was a substantial increase to the overall assessments, but there were so many grievances, obviously 400 grievances, between the town and the village, that I did not want to give that calculation. So, based on what's currently there, I think it's a 1.62% increase in taxes, but I have a very strong feeling that will either go down or go negative, just based on the past two years. And then beyond, that's all, yeah. I was just happy I got a balance.
Thank you for all that hard work that didn't just happen by accident.
It was a challenging year, not having, there are very, very many variables, and there's still very many variables with five unions under negotiation currently, but I'm hoping that I've added the budget enough in salaries that, no matter what comes at us, we can make it work. Maybe we'll even have some extra.
So you can start sleeping at night now?
No. I have two very large capital projects that are going into long-term financing, I won't be able to sleep for a long time. But that's okay.
I did bring my camera tonight. I thought we could do a test room, just see how the lighting of the pictures looked and if we like it. We can decide, I brought up a Dale sweater and my sports back tonight, so depending on people.
I think what we're gonna have to look at is the police department, too. And I'm not saying.
No, no, but I'm more than happy, so what's in the police departments right now? If you look at that schedule, there are no modifications in salaries, because I don't know what any of those salaries are, so if you look at that correlation to what actually hits direct services, it's not the same, because I can't put out what's there without negotiating first.
Yeah, no, I.
But I'm more than happy to share with you what we've gotten from the police department's PDA attorney as to what they want, what they'd feel.
Yeah, I'm not trying to say, I'm just trying to figure out how we can keep.
Oh, absolutely. We have.
More to train.
Oh, yes, very much so.
Did anybody see whiteface today? You couldn't see it, it's under smog.
Almost, everything is under smog, it's bad.
It's pretty bad.
You can see just.
You can smell, we couldn't see that, or we couldn't see alcohol going coming up through the cascades.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Fires aren't getting any better.
No, who wants it, so there's Matthew Blacksmith, who's from, oh, he was showing pictures, so they're showing fires up there. So that was, so do we have anything else with the budget besides that?
No. No, I think we leave it open.
No, I know, I'm just asking questions.
Ask away, I'm not.
No, but what I mean, I'm trying to find out.
An open book. And we're gonna have an opportunity to discuss this again, basically, coming up, so this is, this is more of like a process point for info at this stage.
Well, to, yes.
It officially needs to be presented.
Exactly, and then we've got some time to review and there's how much to do with substantive questions and research.
Because like, maybe, like, maybe you said, we have no idea what, you know.
So one question I have is, why aren't we looking at increasing the town's contribution to fire protection?
So the town's contribution, the way that's set up right now is based on the assist coverage, or what area they covered. It's an actual contract we have with them, we could potentially start those conversations, but there's no way to be done in time for the budget itself. That value has changed, it used to be pretty regimented as to how much we got on an annual basis, over the last couple of years, it's shifted slightly because assessments have changed. The amount of coverage in a few of the hotels that they've had have been taken down, they're now being rebuilt, which will increase the amount. We're also having conversations, so that the dollar amount that came in from Raybrook contribution from the water will change, we use an estimate, but there's quite a substantial water project that's going on there that's gonna take quite a bit of our employees' time and materials, so that will be taken into consideration as well.
Okay, so, the town pays 42% on the.
Approximately.
So my only question, I think I've asked, Jeff, Art before, so does that mean we get double hit?
No, because of the way it is budgeted for in their budget and the way it's budgeted for in our budget, so for taxing purposes, there are certain things that only hit town taxpayers and not town and village taxpayers.
So, but this is the fire department we're talking about, so, so we are no longer double taxed, I always heard it was like 70, 30, we ended up 50, but it's not the case.
I don't believe so, I don't wanna be misquoted, so I'll double check just to make sure.
That's true, because we're, if we're paying one, there's the village one.
Right, like, I know the parks is, is separate and their highway is separate, but I'll double check their capital just to make sure.
Is that one, like, what's about, oh, is tomorrow, fire department.
All right.
The other question I have for you, years ago, was there anything budgeted for the electric department, new building or not?
What, new building?
Where all the trucks and everything, we.
Oh, garage?
Yes.
No, that was, there was a conversation that was had and we got some estimates on how much it would cost, and it was determined that the cost was far too large at the time for what they were looking to get, it would never be a budgeted item because of how substantial it would then, we would have to go out for either bond or if there was any sort of grant funding for it, but at that time, they had sufficient space. We have had more conversation about it in bits as time goes, because Brad's department needs some additional space, so it may come back down later, if we can figure out.
And I mentioned something to Kimball, I said, you should have, have it ready, not saying it would be total, but have an idea of a sketch of what you would want, so then we wouldn't be a year behind.
I think he has one, because he had plans for what he was looking to do. One plan included expanding what was currently there, and then the secondary plan was to build the building.
I can follow.
I was talking to him about that one. I talked to him more, so we'll go back, yeah, and then the other one is the fire department building, and we have a very tough.
In fact, we've talked about creating a larger emergency service building and then utilizing fire, fire dogs.
We, yeah, okay.
No, we, well, we're not. Right, we just have.
Absolutely.
This other building, home building.
Janet, is it appropriate for us to leave comment period open?
We got one more minute.
Well, if you do that, it may impact when you're going to pass the budget.
So no, yes.
No, I mean, you can, but I would make it a short period of time, I mean, it's, what is it, June 5th, so you've got till the 30th to pass the budget, the last meeting of the month is not the 19th, now it's gonna be the 26th, so if you wanted to leave it open for comments for a week or a couple days, you could, because there's time.
Okay, cool. What's the board's pleasure, leave it open three days or so?
Why don't you leave it open till Fri- Friday at 5:00, the end of the week?
Yeah, so I think it'd be helpful to get comments, people have it.
Only comment on Facebook.
Well, and I think, I think you leave it open for public comment, and how will those comments, how should they be made?
Directed to Anita.
All right, well, that should be part of the extension.
Lauren, did you have any questions for us? And Laura, did you have any questions for us?
I do not, well done.
Thank you very much, then at this point, I will close the public hearing at 5:01.
Well, you.
All right, we'll close our public.
We're closing this section, but you're keeping it open for comment till 5 o'clock Friday, with comments to be emailed to Laura, to the Village Clerk.
Till 5:00 Friday. Okay, have a motion.
Make your motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, which case we will open our board meeting, start with a pledge of allegiance. They won't want to say. Okay, once again, thank you very much for all your hard work. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes from May 15?
Some move.
One second.
Any questions, changes?
The, splitting hairs, but in the tree dedication, you said the plaque was for Tim Chick when it was actually for his wife.
Oh, yes.
So.
I'm happy to correct that.
In case it's not in there properly, it's day name.
Okay, yeah, actually, I don't think that had been made clear to me, I don't even think I have her name in here, so I will, I will change that. Darlene, you said?
Daily.
The, oh, day, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Can item B, a special board meeting minutes, May 23rd? Do I have a motion to?
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Any questions or comments there? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for both of those.
Sure.
Item C is change order number 10, water treatment plant, no construction.
There was no dollar amount associated, but that it was the number eight, kind of changed.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And police department resignation. Would anyone like to describe that one?
Ian Gordon, go ahead, the state police.
So he has to pay?
I'll spend.
For restraining right?
He has been enforced.
And the reason for that change was because you can't charge the state police, because you can't charge a person.
And it was put ending contract that way.
Yeah, and we do seem to get cherry picked a lot from the state police, but we wish him well, thank him for his service in the village. A motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
If we tried not approving and keeping, that doesn't work, so all in favor?
Aye.
We got, so we're gonna be down to six police for this summer?
At the end of June, yeah. Maybe we can get the state police to come in, since they've taken all our officers.
I'm just.
We have three part-time. We have Chuck, both Chucks and Ross.
Still going to be a challenge. Item A, chief's annual training conference, July 16th. Should be the 20th, okay.
Second.
All in favor? And item F is approved mini drive for 2024.
Do we get hot for dogs, too?
Second.
Second.
Anybody have any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And item G is carry the load event, May 28th.
Some moving.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, it's a good event, thanks to you for bringing that up. And anything else to come from the court?
Uh, yes, this is something the board was already told about, but just to make things official, it's the request from the Olympic Training Center about holding an Olympic Day on Friday, June 23rd, to use Ritz Park for it, I'll have Team USA letters there, Jackie might know more details on what they're, they're doing, but, but it's, it's a mandate, I guess, will be meeting the kickoff for next year's Olympics.
And actually, the Olympic Day is the 23rd, but due to the fact that the school campus is.
Well, the USOPC is celebrating it on the 23rd, Orda is celebrating it on the 24th.
24th?
Do we have conflicts with the?
The, oh, God, I got it, okay, never mind.
The 23rd is Friday, graduation is Friday, yeah.
So we just need to.
Just approve.
It's part of the 24th.
23rd.
23rd.
Yes, I'll make the motion, second.
Everyone's in favor, obviously, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all.
And item, our treasury items, warrant affidavits number 20. Which one goes over? It's always that. A motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jackie.
And I believe item B is just.
Notification.
Just an official notification, this is what we talked about twice, approved and now it's official services.
Yeah, we have one. Okay, but NICO hasn't passed the resolution.
They already passed it, they passed it, we already.
We passed it first, and then NICO went through, so NICO's rates have been approved
by NICO, they've already been approved by the village, they will go into effect July 1st.
So the bill we get August 1st, or the bill we get July?
The bill you get July 1st.
Okay.
So they were passed at the end of May, but I didn't get them in time to get them in for the June billing, so they will get put in and will be effective on July 1st.
As, how are people being made aware of the change?
It has been put out numerous, 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 numerous times, and I think we're kind of minimal anyway, but. Yes.
So what exactly do you need from us tonight, since?
It's just notification that they will be addressed in the next, though.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't need a resolution or anything from us, very good, okay. Question?
Yeah, just how do you think, so the past two months, we've had negative PPACs, do you think, will it start to affect the PPAC?
If anything, it's gonna make it lower.
The credit, and the PPAC, okay.
Yeah.
Anything else from treasury? New business, possible change in dates, June workshop and July board meeting?
I can go over those if you want. So we already moved the June 19th meeting to June 26th to accommodate, hopefully finalizing the budget and approving it on the 26th.
And June, June 19th?
Right, it's a holiday, right, the 19th. So Art and I were discussing that it might make sense to move the workshop from the 13th to the 20th, to have it closer to the board meeting. Work for everyone?
I'm gonna be away then, I've got a funeral I've gotta go to, but I can dial in.
Okay.
Or if it's on, you know, we can always tell you what was said, I mean, it's basically, if we don't wait until just before, there'll be things that'll pop up, we won't.
Yeah, of course.
Does that work for the three of you?
It's a workshop on the 20th?
20th instead of the 13th.
Okay.
French agents.
Are you taking it?
He's sweating, yeah.
Okay, so I will make that official on the calendar, and then a follow-up to that, so then, although we haven't set the calendar yet, technically, our next board meeting, the first one of July, would be July 3rd, July 4th is a holiday, the offices are closed, so we are frequently cancel that meeting all together, we can't do that this time, because as Mindy could probably better explain than me, there's a part of the, you explain.
The, the thing that the Swazos said that we have to do.
Oh, 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 oh.
We should, you still do have to do that.
Yes, we could do it as a special board meeting, so we did the first part of Seeker for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, so that we could go out for Leah and bill money. The lead agency letters have gone out, and response is to come back July, I think it's July 18th, it's the deadline, or July 21st, I can't remember off the top of my head, should wrote it down, will be the final day that we can submit part two of Seeker, so we need to approve the first section of it, and I'll have all that paperwork prior to that point, we're gonna do it at that board meeting. We can set a special board meeting just to approve it, kinda like we did for the lead agency letters, if that works better for, it's just one item, we can do it after 4th of July.
Although, I mean, we may have other meeting items that, you know, we're really asking to move our regular board meeting to the 5th from the 3rd, so that it doesn't land smack between a regular week and then a one-day holiday, right? So if that works for all of you, that would be July 5th at 5:00 PM then, and like Mindy says, if that doesn't work, we can find another date, but we just thought that that might make sense.
Probably what'll end up happening is we will pass the resolution, we will approve the bills, so they can pay them, and that'll probably be about it, unless something really serious comes up, so the meeting would be very quick, but it's up to you, I don't know your timeline. I don't go anywhere in the summer, so I'm a bit bad for the.
I've never worked the 3rd or the 4th, so, and I gotta work the 5th, so I'm good to come in here and say.
Okay, so I'll have the, that work for you two?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
No, I didn't want to do it, you just canceled it. So, time, okay.
So I, and I'll put that out, the regular calendar for the second half of the year will be coming out in the next June meeting, so I will include that date. That was it for that, thank you.
And the other one was the workshop changing to the 20th.
Yep.
And the 20th is the board meeting. Is that ever, you know, that was June, that was the one that was.
Yeah, I think it was just a discussion.
The discussion for the 20th.
But are we gonna have, since we're meeting the 26th, we're not meeting the 27th workshop, right?
No, right.
Can you send out everything that's happened, so everyone's clear?
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's no, there's no sense.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
I will call you tomorrow, we'll make sure of everything.
No problem.
Anything else under new business?
I do have one item, and that is, company Landis and Gear Technology, Inc. provides meter services to the Village Electric Department, and they're asking for a mutual non-disclosure agreement, in other words, we will not disclose to anybody else any of their information, and they won't disclose to anyone else any of our information. I, I've reviewed it, it's, it's fairly standard, and I would ask for a res- a motion to either authorize you, mayor, or Kimball to sign this on behalf of the village.
Couple of questions on that, because obviously that, like, meter information is quite helpful and potentially powerful for us, and I could envisage a scenario where we may want to share some of that with another vendor, if they're doing something.
Well, that's exactly what they don't want us to do, is to be sharing their pricing and their, and our deal with them with somebody else.
So it's just their pricing, it's not the actual customer data, it's just the contractual information.
That's, yes, that's correct.
That's absolutely.
So they, they don't want us shopping it around or sharing it with another entity that might be using their services, because our deal with them is our deal with them.
It's fine, as long as we have access to the customer data and we make that available to other third parties, I think that's fine.
And, and this is a company that we, we may be going into more business with, because they have, I'm going to call them smart meters, but that's not the right word, they're the type of meter where you don't even have to drive around and get the data, it comes into you.
Smart meter, yeah.
And when those do come about, my understanding is if someone has a water leak or something, you know.
A water leak, an electric.
Electric leak, but when we get to the water ones, that'll be really good.
Yeah, Water has these smart meters as well, and we've slowly started to transition to those, so we're actually looking at an upgrade through tie sales to get those up.
Has happened to me with my basement flooded, it would've been nice, someone would've come and called me or shut off the water to it, but that would be great someday. Anything else under new business? Oh, sorry, we have.
So I, I make a motion, is that what you needed?
I needed a motion to authorize, yes, the mayor or Kimball or whoever you designate to sign this on behalf of the village.
I motion, I make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't, I guess either if Kimball wants to.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to fill out some of this, so we'll, we'll get that, okay.
Okay, anything else on your new business?
Um, just a note, because I just found out about it myself, the power is going off from 6:00 to 6:30 tomorrow morning through a section of Main Street, because they're replacing the wire behind it. You did not know any of it, but it's happening.
Good.
And just to note, that that wire is not coming out of this budget, it came out of two budgets ago, actually, because we had already purchased it.
Anything else?
Yeah.
I was gonna get that out, too, I guess not.
It went out today.
I started it out as a sometimes association, but did you see it from somewhere else, good? As long as it's in a couple places.
Yeah, I found out about it about 2:00.
Me, I read there.
Yes.
Okay, anything else in the business, going once, twice? Anything under old business?
Did we talk about, we did talk about, can we get Janet's, everything about the beach, we're all, I got Jackie's new thing.
All right, I think we're, we're gonna talk about that in a work session.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else? Um, mayor item, so anything I have to report is Community Day was a big success, very well attended. Probably the biggest one I've seen so far, seems to be growing every year despite the pandemic.
Nice weather helped it.
Uh, we're mediumized now, the black flies and frost held off, it was 92, it didn't rain. It's a great one around that day. And two very nice, um, recipients, the sheer co-recipients.
Molly reports that the face painting burgers were her favorite.
That was a big line, of course.
Yes.
And if it's Molly approved, it had to be successful.
That's right, yeah.
Um, anything from trustees?
Um, just to flag, I think most people saw it, but, um, the Lake Classic Marathon sent out a mailer, which I think landed Saturday for most people, just with.
It was in the newspaper, yeah.
Yeah, it was in the newspaper, but I think everybody hopefully received a little postcard with the info on road closures, et cetera. So we'll see, see if that seems helpful to people.
That was a good nudge on your part.
Yeah.
I bet.
Yeah.
Um, anything else from trustee reports? Correspondence, um, institutional letter?
Um, if you all look at the packet, you saw there was a letter from a middle schooler in Lake Classic who would like the board to revisit the livestock and chicken policies. Um, he thinks that homeowners should be allowed to have a limited quantity of laying hands on their property. Share that with all of you, I don't know if any one of you want to send Liam a reply email or if you'd like me to send something on your path.
Why don't we bring that up at our next workshop?
Yeah.
And we like.
Only roosters next to Jackie. She's got a building on all four sides now.
I believe we have deed restrictions that supersede whatever the village does, so I'm not too concerned, Andrew.
Yes.
I can't help being there.
Okay, um, any questions from Laura or Lauren?
This is Laura, I have none, thank you.
Okay. And Lauren, anything more from you? Okay, um, in that case, if something else went forward, we'll entertain a motion with manager. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very much.